I'd like to call to order the February 7th meeting of the Planning Commission. Erin, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
President.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Chair Kistner?
Here. This is now public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion or take any action on matters not described on this agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Do we have any public comment? All right, I'll close public comment. Consent, the next is consent items. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any item be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action, for extended discussion, or for public comment. Unless this is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions.
Chair Kistner, I'd like to just state for the record that there was a typo in item 4.3. The staff report mistakenly identifies that the project is located in both the Charter Oak Historic District and the Adams Street Historic District. It is in the Adams Street Historic District. Just want to clarify that. And there has been a slight change to the minutes. Due to the format that the minutes are put in, some of the recusals in discussion or statements that were made prior to item 5.2, it was unclear which item they were associated with. It was intentional that they were, the information was placed prior to item 5.2, but staff made a brief change in the minutes just to identify that that happened prior to the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Are you asking if we want to pull something?
Yes.
I would like to pull the minutes from November 15th. I guess that's item 4.1.
Anyone else want to pull the minutes? Anything?
Let's see.
May I have a, oh, may I have a motion to approve the?
Oh.
4.2, 4.3, and 4.4.
Oh, wait a second. I'm sorry, can you wait a second? I think I had...
Those are all in the consent calendar.
I know, I think, I think I would like to pull 4.2. I have a couple of questions.
So you want to pull 4.1 and 4.2?
Both.
Do I hear a motion to approve 4.3 and 4.4?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
All right. For the minutes on November 15th, I just want to look on page 10 of 53, of 153. It says that on the motion to deny the use permit requested, for the requested reduction in density, that was never voted on. And it, here on the record, shows a vote. So I think it's important to get that vote off of there. Because we didn't vote on it. The applicant withdrew his application before that was voted on. It says below, it says prior to the final vote, that it was, that they withdrew the application, but it was never voted on, to my recollection. And that of someone else who was there.
There was one vote taken at that meeting on one of the discretionary actions.
It wasn't on the density thing. That didn't ever get voted on. This is, says the motion to move to deny the use permit for the requested reduction in density. That was never voted on.
Staff will review the tape and come back. It was either the tentative map itself or the use permit. And my recollection is that it was the use permit, so we'll just go back and review the tape to confirm.
Yeah, and we, the one that I moved, we did vote on.
Yeah. I mean, the design review was voted on, the other ones voted on, but not the density. Not the third one. I mean, that's my recollection. Okay.
I thought we voted on all of them.
If I'm wrong, you know, I'm wrong 95% of the time, but that's...
And he withdrew.
Yeah, so it wasn't voted on.
I thought that one was as well. It was the one that he didn't, he...
Maybe you need to check.
Let staff handle this one, please.
We'll review the tape and confirm.
All right. And then, the question I had, and maybe I just missed it, but I didn't see a lot size on this application. And I was, I wondered if it was currently a one-bedroom structure. And I also had, I had some question about the covered porch that was going to encroach into the required setback by five feet. And I just wondered if the neighbor had been, if there was a neighbor involved, and if so, that's under zoning in the second paragraph. If they had been contacted, because from a covered porch to an open porch, the open porch was probably going to have people, you know, sitting and conversing and making noise. And to be five more feet into a setback seems significant. So I just thought I'd bring that up. I didn't know if anyone else would have an issue with that. I do. But if no one else does, no one else does. But I did want to know what the lot size was, or if I just missed it, or if it wasn't stated. Because it was kind of hard to figure it out.
Well, it's right here on floor ratio, the number, but it's not specifically called out that it's, that's the lot size.
What's the lot size?
Right there. 7, 8, 2, 1.
Oh, okay, thank you. I didn't, yeah. And what is the allowable FAR? I couldn't find that either. Now, it might be there, but I didn't see it. There's, it gives this FAR, but what was the allowable FAR? Is that on there? And I just missed that one, too.
I believe it's, isn't it .3?
2,580 square feet. As a maximal allowable FAR.
That's correct.
She wants a percentage.
Yeah, a percentage.
Isn't it .3? It depends on...
It's usually there. I just don't do the calculations. I was just wondering what it was. It's kind of hard to compare. So, I was...
Can I just clarify? This is a minor mod, and we have no neighbor objections, right?
That's correct.
Right, but the movement of the porch, first of all, it's covered now, and it's going to be uncovered, which could be a noise issue. And it's, in addition to being uncovered now, it's going to be moved five feet into the setback. So I just, that was a little concern. I don't know if the applicant had anything to say about it, or if they talked to the neighbors and nobody cared, or what. That's all. I'm just bringing it up. It seems significant to me.
So the allowable FAR is about .3?
Okay. Thanks. So that's quite a bit less. Okay, thanks. That's helpful. But is it, you got, no one else has an issue with the five feet encroachment?
Same reasons as Commissioner Sweeney. It's a minor modification, and there's no neighbor complaints.
Okay.
I agree.
Were neighbors contacted?
No, neighbors are not noticed on consent items or design review exemptions in general, because there's no public hearing requirement.
Unless it's pulled.
It would, even if it's pulled, the public hearing is separate than a public discussion. So the only way a public hearing would occur is if the planning commission found that a public hearing was needed and directed staff and the applicant to come back at a future date, fully noticed with a public hearing.
Okay, well, obviously, that's not going to happen, so I'm, you know, that's the way it is, and I just wanted to bring it up. Thank you very much.
Do I hear a motion to approve 4.1 and 4.2?
Well, not 4.1, because they're going to come back with it.
Well, I think she's just going to correct it.
They're going to look at the tape.
Okay.
I move to approve 4.2 from the consent calendar. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
I'm going to stay. I don't have enough information.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
All right, now we move to public hearings.
Do we want to let everyone know on the consent calendar that if your items are good to go, you can go? You don't want to enjoy? You're welcome to stay, but, but you're approved, you're good. Yeah. You're welcome.
We need all the help we can. Thank you. Thanks for your good work.
All right, we're now into public hearings. And the first item is a location of a property at 1405 Adams Street. May I have a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kistner. The project before you is 1405 Adams Street Residence Design Review. The applicant is requesting design review approval to construct a new single-family residence with attached accessory dwelling, swimming pool, landscaping, and other pertinent improvements at 1405 Adams in St. Helena. At present, the subject site is a vacant residential lot of approximately 8,600 square feet, situated on the western corner of Adams Street and Allen Avenue. The property is zoned medium-density residential. The proposed residence and ADU exhibit a traditional form, or would exhibit a traditional form and style. There would be two stories in height and would feature a variation in wall planes, a wraparound porch, and multi-gabled roof. The wall cladding would be painted wood, and all structures would be unified with similar paint and trim colors, as well as wood doors and windows facing the street. The maximum height measured at the peak of the roof would be about 24 and 1/2 feet. Also proposed is a landscaped area of about 3,600 square feet and consisting predominantly of medium-water use plantings with a few low-water use plantings. Hardscape will include gravel and concrete pavers. And a six-foot wood fence with two-feet lattice would extend around the rear and interior side yard property lines, with a low wood fence flanking, a wooden gate located along the portion, the property frontage. The site features a general plan and zoning designation of medium-density residential, which allows for single-family detached homes and accessory dwelling units amongst other uses. Under the zoning code, an 8,600-square-foot parcel is allowed a maximum floor area of .324. Accordingly, the applicant is proposing a, an FAR of .289, which would equate to a net total of 24, or 2,495 square feet. And that includes exemptions for the garage and accessory dwelling unit. As proposed, staff finds that the residence meets all development criteria, including height, setback, parking, and floor area criteria. The residence will exhibit a minimum setback of 20 feet at the front, rear, and side street, street-side setback, and 10 feet at the interior side yard. Consistent with the allowances provided under the zoning code, the proposed wraparound porch will encroach into the setback by about six feet. Similarly, the detached garage will exhibit a three-foot interior side yard setback, which is authorized under the zoning code. The immediate vicinity surrounding the project site is a well-established neighborhood, features traditional building forms and styles of relatively modest size. Most property frontages feature generous landscaping. To promote the compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and meet design criteria, the applicant proposes a traditionally-inspired home that features variations in wall plane, will be capped with a multi-gabled roof. The landscaping is generous and extends along the street-side setback and property frontage. In general, the project does appear to be of a design consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and meets the design review criteria. As I stated before, the applicant is proposing an attached accessory dwelling unit of 563 square feet. To make it easier for property owners to create accessory dwelling units, Governor Brown recently signed Assembly Bill 2299 and Senate Bill 1069 into law, which amended Government Code Section 658, 52.2. And as amended, the Government Code further limits public agencies' ability to regulate accessory dwelling units. To the extent that a city's ordinance imposes requirements beyond those enumerated in the state law, those local provisions are preempted, or were preempted as of January 1st, and only state standards may be enforced. Review of the amended Government Code section indicates that the proposed ADU is consistent with applicable standards in that it will be located within a single-family residential zone, will be attached to a single-family residential unit, would provide independent exterior access, which would be provided from rear sliding glass doors, which would access kind of out to the rear backyard of the property. And in that, the side and rear setbacks are sufficient to ensure fire safety. As such, the project is found to be in compliance with the applicable regulations that are currently in effect. As a new single-family residence, the project is subject to the growth management system. The stated purpose of the growth management system is to regulate the residential growth of the city to approximately 2% per year while providing for both market rate and affordable housing. According to the growth management system, no more than dying building permits may be issued each year. So far, in 2017, four units have been assigned. This project would constitute the fifth, and there would be four permits remaining. Therefore, there appear to be adequate allotments available to accommodate the project. Given that, staff recommends approval of the project. And that is all I have.
Do you have any questions, Sarah?
Yeah, what, how many off-street parking places are there supposed to be on here?
I believe there are, there's one covered, and I believe three uncovered.
Okay, thanks. And I think there are like three required, so there's one over the requirement?
I believe so.
Yeah. And, oh, and also, I had a question. I thought the, I thought the fence standard size was six feet?
It's six feet solid, and then two feet lattice.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that wasn't specified.
All right.
Thank you for everyone's service this evening, for coming out on a stormy day. My name is Luke Wade from Wade Design Architects. We also have Paul Rozansky here from Rozansky Design, who prepared the landscape drawings that you see. It's always great when we see a favorable, favorable report from, from staff. And I don't want to belabor anyone with a long-winded explanation of how we've arrived at this design. But I will talk briefly about it, and would obviously, would want to take any questions that any of you have. I am actually very, personally very satisfied with how this particular design turned out. It's a, the lot is a parallelogram, at least in the way the setbacks were, work, set it up that way, which makes it kind of a difficult shape to work with, considering that we don't usually go around living in parallelograms. So cascading, rectilinear building masses and room masses on that site led us to this approach of breaking up the upstairs program into two separate areas, which is a less, less cost-effective way to build, but certainly will make for a more beautiful presence on the street, and will help break down the scale of the building, so that, to my eye, will allow it to harmonize with the rest of the homes that are, that are already on, running down Adams and Allen on that intersection. The home is surrounded by a mix of one- and two-story structures. The most immediate buildings to the lot, meaning the one directly to the west, directly to the south, and directly to the east, are all two-story. And then, the house directly to the north is a kind of an odd one-and-a-half-story structure, because it, it kind of has steps down into a lower, lower half-basement level that then lifts the upstairs up. So that's all to say that going to two stories seemed quite all right for this particular project. And we've, we've been careful to locate those masses in ways that do not shadow or block the adjacent landowners. The mass also helps to mark where the front entry door is, off of both streets. So there's, there's, the hope is that there's a, a kind of subconscious understanding of how to navigate up to this house from the street. And, you know, it's occupying a corner lot, so I think it will be an important building for the neighborhood. Considering that it's been a vacant lot for so long, I think it'll be a good addition to the fabric. The materials palette is a, is a mix of painted wood siding, and also, on the roof, for the low-silver roof, we're doing a darker gray standing seam, and then a kind of a dressed-up comp shingle, is what we call it, with this diamond pattern. So that it's, it's nothing pretentious, but certainly proud of itself. And also has a bit of a historic character to it, which we like. And obviously, using St. Helena Cottage wallstone on a cottage in St. Helena made a lot of sense. And I'll let Paul speak for a moment.
Paul Rozansky with Rozansky Design in Sonoma. We worked very hard to come up and the, deal with some of the shapes that we were left with on this property, but I think we've come up with a good solution here. We've, the owners have really pushed the outdoor space, both in the front and the back, so it's a landscape that, the vegetable beds is facing Adams Street. And, you know, they'll be using that porch, the, there's an existing ginkgo tree on the corner that'll remain, that'll be very nice. There's also an old fig that's kind of laying down at the side, that's going to remain. The rest of the lot is fairly, there's some camphor trees that'll go, but with the new trees that we're proposing there, pistachio, and some Japanese maples in the back, some smaller growing ones, and some carpinas to give them some shade around there. I think with the, you know, in the front, there's no big tall shrubbery, low nepas and lorioti, flower carpet roses, and to give a blue and white theme to it. With some big bald box was to give us some character. Some gravel, you know, minimal front walkway with the concrete. And then, from the garage over to the back, but the rest will be either gravel pathway, a softer, look, ground covers in between them and all that. And there's a nice screening along the back, there'll be a thuya hedge to give them some privacy, also from the neighbors next door. Some magnolias in the corners there, and low grasses around the pool, and ground covers around the pool. Okay?
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Sarah, would you like to open the discussion, please?
Can I ask a question first? Or is it too late for staff?
Go ahead.
Can you point out on the plans where the entrance is to the second unit? Where the separate entrance is? I'm on page three, I think that's where...
It's a glass door in the back.
Yeah, I believe it's just at the rear of the, you know, with the elevation that faces the backyard.
Looking out of the window, right?
Yes. I believe so.
So that, but that goes into, that looks like it goes into the master bedroom. I'm just looking at it.
No, this is the master bedroom. That's the backyard right there.
Follow the driveway around, and there's a pathway.
Oh, okay. So it's back, okay, so it's back there. It's not in the front where that little mechanic building is?
No, that, no. It's in there.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, Sarah.
You get to learn to read blueprints when you play Clue as a child. Sorry. Play the game Clue. You have to know where the doors are. Count spaces. I, I think the design is beautiful. I think that it has been an empty lot for quite some time, going to go at least 34 years that I've been around. And I think that it is a nice respect to the interesting shape of the lot. And it's not a mass of two stories, but a gradual up to two stories, which I think is very respectful of the mixed use of the neighborhood. Landscape looks great. I, I don't really have any complaints on it. I think it's well within the FAR, and it's not...
Not within the FAR.
It is within the FAR.
This is outside the FAR.
It's a little bit below. But given how big the lot is, it's, I think it's just fine.
I concur. And knowing the other homes around the area, I think that it's a nice combination of style. It will fit in beautifully there. And I think that the respectful way of doing landscaping really sets it back. That is a corner that, it is widely traveled since it's Adams Street, so I think having all those trees put in the front. And then keeping that old fig tree is beautiful, as is the ginkgo. I walk by there often. So it's nice to know those will be there. And then maintained, they could use some love, so I think it looks beautiful. I support it.
I agree with what's been said. However, I have a couple of questions. Is there an oak tree that's going to be coming down?
Yes.
And the oak tree is going to be coming down for a parking place? And is, is that, have you already talked to the tree committee, or what's the, what's the story on the oak tree?
Tree committee doesn't have jurisdiction over non-heritage trees on private property, based on current regulations.
Okay. Are you going to replace the oak with another oak somewhere? I'm just wondering. Because our valley oaks are precious. Okay, I, I don't like that idea. I wish you could design it so you could keep the oak. I also find the scale kind of big. I don't think any of the houses around there have swimming pools. I could be wrong, but I don't think that that fits in with those, with the neighborhood. And I would like to see the swimming pool bagged for that reason, as well as that it gets...
Numerous homes in that neighborhood have swimming pools.
The house immediately to the east across...
There's a house kitty-corner to it, has a swimming pool.
Yeah, actually, I think all three around those corners.
Oh, really? Okay. But they're not visible, obviously, but will this one be visible?
No, it's in the backyard.
No. Okay, then my question about, then, I also have a question then about the, the wraparound porch. Because similarly, from the other design that we were just talking about, it's going to encroach into the setback by six feet. And, and, you know, and a porch also can be a place where people are going to gather and make noise. So I'm assuming that the neighbors on this one were notified, and did you speak with them? Or you were just, no one, no one responded, so you didn't reach out any further? Was that, is that accurate?
First, I just like to say that about, about the wraparound porches, they're both street-facing, so they don't, they don't face a neighbor. And the intent with them is, is that they will actually help bring the scale of the building down by having a lower-level roofline and some shading and shadowing. So I, and the six feet, I understand that it's part of the, of the, it's not, it's not an encroachment in the, in the term that we need to get permission to take that. I believe it's in the, I'm, I'm, I'll let a planner...
Porches are specifically allowed to encroach within setbacks, because they're essentially encouraged as architectural features and elements by the zoning code.
Okay, so, all right. So, but I'm, I should have been able to tell that from, I'm, I'm really challenged with plans, so...
All right, that's why I'm here, to help.
Yeah, all right. Well, thanks, thank you for that clarification. But I, it is not within FAR, it's exactly at FAR. So again, I'm, but this is my, I'm, I'm all by myself up here on this. I think it's too massive. I would like to see, you know, smaller dwellings, but go ahead.
So if I can speak to that, because the cover letter we sent out, with, per our calculations, and Lily runs, you know, runs her own as well, so it may deviate slightly, but per our calculations, the, we're at 91%. So we're not, we didn't design this house to completely bang its head on what's allowable. And in fact, because... allowable, and in fact, because of the, the kind of parallel, parallelogram nature of what we were allowed to build, um, there's actually quite a bit of undeveloped tight to that, to that, uh, setback line. Um, so, we're, we're underneath the, the, the FAR, the FAR.
You are. I mean, if you hadn't had the, those exemptions, which you do have, I'm not questioning that, it would've been over, but, you know, so it's tight in that sense, and, you know, it's just the massing of, you know, I know you've done, I really respect, um, you're very articulate about what you've done, or, you know, you obviously are artists, um, all of you who are, that's what, you know, you're serious, um, talented people, so I appreciate, um, what you've done and, and how you've tried to make it fix.
But I, I appreciate that, I mean, we're charged with, um, taking a client's program, their wishes for what to do with the land, and figure out how to, how to make that gracefully appear, right? Within the context of, of a wonderful, uh, place like St. Helena, and try to help navigate how to make beauty out of that. Um, with this particular project, what we struck upon was, you know, because we didn't want to fight, we didn't want to rotate the building, honestly, and make it hit that front setback, uh, in a strong way. We thought that would be wrong-headed, which, starting with that approach, created all sorts of complications for us right off the bat, but we felt like that was the right way to go about it, rather than, um, make a big broad face. And, um, so that led to a thought of, well, if we have two separate second-story areas, then we can make this look like it was added on to over time, that there was a kind of maybe a main, and I didn't articulate this earlier, because it's a little bit of a poetic conceit, but, um, but I will now. But, uh, I left that, I left that in the arsenal. Um, the idea was that maybe there was a main building, you know, a cottage at one point, and then it changed hands, and there was a breezeway that got filled in, and now that's gonna be the master, and things got added to over time. And that elevation, instead of it being one big face now, will be a high, a kind of a, a crest, a high point, it comes back down, and then a secondary, which I think will feel much better. Um, and we could possibly have created a smaller square footage project to meet their program, had we gone with the big flat face, right? So, then we could've been here today presenting to you an FAR, F for FAR, number that was lower, but in my opinion, my estimation, would've been an uglier project.
Thanks, um, right. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I still, um, wish it were smaller, simply because that's kind of what town has said over the years, they wanted, they didn't want massing to the limits, and, but I totally appreciate what you've done. But I can't, you know, for, for me, it seems that, um, you know, four point three point four, and four point three point five, and four point three point two five, and some of the findings, they don't, they don't compute for me. I mean, they do for everyone else, and I think they do for the other people on the, um, on the planning commission, but, um, I just have to say that. It just seems too massive to me, I would like to see it smaller, um, but that's my opinion, and only my opinion, so...
I agree, it's, it's, um, I, I would prefer it to be a little smaller, but the thing that disturbs me, um, the most is the, uh, is the parking right on, on, almost on the street, uh, on Adams Street, that, and I don't know if there's anything you can do about that, I can see, um, that you have a big challenge with this lot, but, um, I'm not too sure that I care for that parking sitting right on, on Adams Street. Uh, I, I believe our general plan, I'm asked, that parking should be more to the rear of the property. I also feel that that parking should be closer to the second unit, if that's really what that's for.
Can I speak to this?
Go ahead.
Um, if you, if you take a look at our sheet number two, which kind of shows the wider...
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay, great, the wider vicinity there. Um, the, and I'm, you know, I, I agree with you that it's best when parking can be, can be pulled away from the street. Um, we settled on the location that we're showing it primarily because the lot directly to the west of us has, has parking in that exact same area, which is also something as designers we look to do, is to, um, uh, when possible, kind of gang up where parking happens with the, with the neighboring lots. So, we've ganged it up with our neighbor on that side, and, um, you can actually see the car there in the satellite photo, so it's, it's, it's virtually identical. And then on the other side, on the, on the north side, where we have our garage, uh, very similar story, of the driveway coming in tight to this property's property line on that side. So, that, that was, um, the rationale on where the parking ended up.
I understand that, I think this is a very challenging lot to be on, it's just that, that I would prefer to see it back off the street. Um, the other garage is back, the main garage is back off the street. Uh, I think you've done, um, a remarkable job with the, the lots you have, I just would prefer not to have the parking in those areas like that.
Understood.
Do you have any more comments? Thank you. Any further discussion? Someone like to make a motion?
I move. I move to find the proposed configuration of the site, the overall design elements and proposed materials finishes are in character with the neighborhood and the community in general. Because of this, um, we support concluding the design review findings can be made, and recommend, um, that we determine the project is exempt from requirements of CEQA pursuant to section fifteen three oh three, which exempts the construction of single-family residences, and accept required findings and grant design review approval for the Adams Street residents at one four zero five Adams Street. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
No.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Uh, the next item is five point two, uh, it's a request by John, excuse me, it's a request by John Anderson for a use permit in order to establish a catering operation in addition to the existing chocolate shop at an existing tenant space located at thirteen sixty-seven Main Street in the central district, uh, business district. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kistner. Uh, Woodhouse Chocolate currently operates as a permitted use in the existing tenant space at thirteen sixty-seven Main Street. The applicant proposes to add a catering component to this existing business, uh, at this location. The addition of a catering business to the existing chocolate shop will not require any change to the property or buildings, as the facility already meets requirements as a commercial kitchen, and is approved by Napa County Department of Environmental Health. The catering business would focus on barbecued meats, which would require the use of portable smokers. The applicant currently owns three different models of smokers that could be used individually or in combination as the situation requires. The applicant proposes to place the smokers immediately outside the rear of the building in one of their three parking spaces located off Money Way. The applicant has agreed that the smokers will not be located or operated behind the building from nine AM to five PM Monday through Thursday, and a condition of approval has been added to this effect. As such, the smokers could be operational from Thursday at five PM to Monday morning before nine AM. The smoking of meat typically lasts from ten to twelve hours, according to the applicant, and therefore will typically occur overnight. An employee will be required to be there onsite during smoking act, smoking activities to, uh, monitor the smokers, and a condition of approval has been added to that effect as well. The fire department has no concerns over the use of the smokers at the proposed location, and according to the applicant, the, the smokers are insulated and do not generate, generate enough heat to, uh, burn when touched. When not in use, the smokers will be stored at a private storage facility off-site. The applicant anticipates that the catering company, uh, would be family-staffed and almost exclusively utilize the same employees as Woodhouse Chocolate. It is therefore not anticipated that catering will increase the total number of employees onsite at any given time. However, to, in order to mitigate any parking impact resulting from the smokers, uh, when in use, the applicant will encourage employees to carpool, ride bicycles, use public transportation. Uh, in addition, the applicant has offered, uh, to donate five hundred dollars to the Public Works Department for the purchase and installation of a bike rack that can be placed anywhere, uh, at the city's discretion. The project site has a general plan and zoning designation of central business. Uh, the existing confectionery shop is a permitted use in the central business district, however, the applicant is required to obtain a use permit in order to allow for the addition of the catering component, uh, to the established chocolate shop. Staff finds that the project meets, answer complies with required findings to approve a use permit. Uh, the findings in the included, uh, resolution identify this compliance. Uh, a couple of issues is noted in the staff report, and is detailed in the parking analysis, that the existing tenant space is required to have two dedicated parking spaces, there are currently three. Therefore, even when the smokers are in use and occupying, uh, one of the buildings, uh, three dedicated spaces, it will still meet the, the minimum number of required parking spaces. And while staff has concern about the loss of parking during smoker operation, uh, as previously noted, a condition has been, uh, added that they can't be located or operated behind the building from nine to five, uh, Monday through Thursday, in order to minimize these impacts. Uh, with the Monday through Thursday restriction, the potential, the potential does exist for the smokers to be operational during the weekend, which could result in smoke and odor impacting surround, uh, the surrounding area. The applicant has indicated that smokers produce a minimal amount of smoke, however, staff has no knowledge, uh, of the actual amount of smoke that will be produced when these are being used. Um, and while it is not anticipated that significant impacts will occur, the commission may wanna, uh, consider revisiting the item in six months to ensure that no impacts are occurring downtown, and a condition of approval would need to be added, uh, to this effect. Staff feels the addition of a catering business to the existing chocolate shop will likely have minimal impact to surrounding businesses, as it won't be in everyday use, will largely occur overnight, won't require the hiring of any additional staff, and will use an existing commercial kitchen and an existing facility. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission determine the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to section fifteen three oh one, and accept the required findings and approve the use permit for thirteen sixty-seven Main Street. And I would be happy to try and answer any questions you may have at this time. The applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Any questions of staff?
I have a disclosure, I did meet with the applicant earlier on in the process.
I also met with the applicant.
I, I was not chosen to meet with the applicant.
I did not either.
I sent emails to everybody.
I did not.
Mr. Anderson, would you like to speak, sir?
I'd love to. You didn't miss a party.
Um, we've been here a long time. Uh, as you know, we've had a business in town. I didn't introduce myself, forgive me. I'm John Anderson, uh, owner of Woodhouse Chocolate at thirteen sixty-seven Main Street, uh, and we are interested in doing some catering. Um, we have been there for fourteen years now, and have always had, uh, a good relationship with our neighbors, and I know that, that one person commented, uh, that they were concerned about this project generating, uh, additional, uh, traffic, perhaps my employees parking illegally, uh, at their facility, and, and that sort of thing. Um, I, I think the proof is in the pudding. Um, we've been there for fourteen years, we've never, that I'm aware of, had a parking problem with a neighbor, uh, and I don't anticipate any with this project either. Um, we're not increasing the number of employees that we have, um, and we're operating during evening hours when parking is far less impacted, uh, than it would be during the day as well. Um, we're using the same vendors, um, that other people use, uh, gosh, you know, Byright Chef's Warehouse, Rekoff, that sort of thing, so these trucks are in that alleyway every single day, uh, delivering to other, uh, facilities, delivering to us, uh, so there is no, uh, additional, uh, vendors coming into the area. Uh, and, um, you know, as my wife said, "Tell them I walk to work every day." Uh, she does, uh, actually, so there's one parking spot. Uh, and she said, "Tell them you'll walk to work every day, uh, then you'll lose some weight." Uh, so, uh, I can't promise that, but, uh, you know, I...
Definitely not this morning.
Yeah. As I say, I think we've been good neighbors, I don't see any reason why we can't continue to be good neighbors for everyone. Uh, I think, uh, having, uh, you know, quality barbecue catering in the valley is, is a worthwhile project, uh, and, uh, you know, we, we hope to do it, uh, and we hope to do it, uh, at the same time honoring our neighbors. Uh, so, for me, um, I think it's a good project. Uh, so, you tell me.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Anderson?
I do, I did see you the last time you were here, and I, um, remember, I, I thought that you said when the smokers were gonna be there, that it would take up two parking places.
No, just one.
Just one?
Just one, yeah.
Okay. This is, uh, just, and, oh, and the other question I had is, um, will the, oh, you, I think you've answered it, the, the trucks are gonna be bringing the meat to you?
Any of that sort of stuff, they're already, it isn't, it isn't that we're adding to the traffic.
So, that you're saying that they're all...
They're actually, we actually get, when, when two of them deliver to us, they deliver with a, with, you know, a, uh, you know, one barbecue and one, you know, Woodhouse Chocolate. Uh, at the moment, we're operating out of Panavino, uh, and so we move it over there, but it's just convenient for us to, to, to take possession of meat and that sort of thing.
So, no extra trucks are coming to them?
There are no extra trucks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Public comment is closed. Tracy, would you like to open the discussion?
Uh, I support the opportunity to have more business, um, generated at this location. We passed a sales tax measure, and we have a lot of open storefronts, so I think the opportunity for you to have, to expand your reach and have clients that are buying a new service, I think is terrific, and I wish you well.
I think it's, um, great, too. I, I especially like the idea that it's gonna be revisited in six months to see if we've missed anything, and, and something might be problematic, and, um, and I also appreciate your, uh, supplying some money for bicycle racks and, and to encourage that, and, um, I'm wondering if you're gonna have a, a smoked chocolate, um, flavor added, a barbecue almond dark chocolate?
Bobby, I don't think it's been decided that we're gonna revisit it in six months.
Yeah, we have to move.
We'd have to move, add that to the, um, resolution.
Oh, all right, sorry. Well, if it is, if it, if it does get approved, I was just curious about that.
Sarah?
I also am in support of the project, it adds a nice, another mix to Main Street, the Main Street dynamic, um, and I guess we should probably discuss, do we need to, do we feel the need to revisit it in six months?
Why, how can we know now? We're, we would visit, revisit in six months to see if anything, any unintended consequences are on something that we didn't know?
I mean, we don't require it from other use permits. My challenge is that it's being consistent with other use permits.
The reason I would, that I think it's appropriate here is that there is a smoke and odor issue, and at the, at the present time, there doesn't seem to be any reason to think that would be a problem, but that might be a problem, we don't know. And I, that's, that's something that affects people around, it's smoke and it's, and it's odor, so I think it's appropriate to revisit it, and apparently the traffic isn't going to be...
Do you have a question? So, if it did generate smoke and odors, and we didn't visit it in six months, wouldn't that be in violation of the use permit, so we could bring it back in to discuss?
So, one of the findings required to, for the commission to approve a use permit is that the project will not have fume and odor impacts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it, I would agree that it is atypical to put, some people call them sunset clauses on use permits, or clawback clauses, however, it is perfectly legal, and they are occasionally used, um, I don't know that they've been used in St. Helena before, but they are occasionally used as a mechanism when there's uncertainty for the commission to have an, uh, opportunity to revisit, um, but that is purely at the discretion of the commission.
I mean, it could be, we could say that, you know, if, if everyone's been contacted, there have been no complaints, you have no questions, we wouldn't have to do it, but I think it's, I think it's, I think it's appropriate to have it in there in case there are some complaints, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be revisited if, if, if there are no complaints and you didn't want to.
Beg your pardon?
Can I speak?
Go ahead, John.
Microphone.
I actually, I actually did contact all of my neighbors personally. Um, I was not able to speak to all of them because I simply am busy and wasn't able to get around to everybody. Um, but, along with trying to speak to all of you, um, I did go personally to my neighbors with the plan and tried to discuss and answer any questions they might have had. Um, I know that, uh, you know, certainly if we were in, in violation of, of anything where we were harming the, the atmosphere or environment, or, or any of those sorts of things, then, then obviously, I, I myself would want to shut me down. Um, but when I look at the fact that we're next door to Model Bakery, we're next door to Market, we're just down the street from where they're roasting coffee every night, um, these are all things that seem to work within the community. Um, and I know that, um, the smoke that is generated by a smoker, when you light them, they do generate considerable smoke, because that's just what happens when you light anything. But, they actually run a great deal cleaner than would a standard barbecue, simply because if, if you have a lot of smoke in the chamber, you're over-smoking your meat, uh, and, and so, um, then you're making a substandard product. But, um, you know, I obviously would prefer not to be revisited in six months.
But, um, you know, I obviously would prefer not to be revisited in six months, um, but we, you know, we do want to be, uh, responsible business.
Madam Chair, maybe I could off, also offer some elimination, that, that the commission already has the authority under your existing zoning ordinance to revisit any use that, that you make a determination on the recommendation of your planning director, that the use is detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, so-
Oh, that was my question, is can I bring it back if, if there are complaints? Okay. Then I don't think that we need to visit it in six months. Yeah, I wouldn't want to encumber this permit and this approval with something we don't do for other. I, I think that becomes inconsistent and a little nebulous.
And the purpose of it would, is met through a different means that we already have.
Right, right, and how do we trigger that, and, yeah, I think that makes it onerous.
That would be complaint-driven, right?
So complaints would create a reason to, here, you don't have to encumber this use with saying that in six months, we're now going to revisit it. That, that makes it a definite timeframe, whereas-
Agreed.
As with any use on Main Street or otherwise.
I think it's a waste of time and money to have a six-month clause.
I do, too, and I think it just throws it, it becomes inconsistent rolling out of these-
I should say, it need not be complaint-driven. If any member of the commission were to notice this as a problem, or if any constituent were to raise this to you or your planning director, um, you certainly could bring it before the commission to evaluate that issue and conduct the appropriate procedures for that.
But Tom, that's, that's across the board for any acting business in town with a use permit, so-
Absolutely, for every business.
Any single planning commissioner? It wouldn't have to be a majority of the planning commission?
From the staff's perspective, it's a majority of the commission would have to direct staff.
Yes, so.
You can have one of your friends-
Typically, what happens is that-
Can I have my turn? I'm not even, I, I just thought it was very thoughtful to have that as a condition, since this is first, you know, I think that was, I thought it was an appropriate, um, caution, and it doesn't necessarily have to happen, but, you know, I guess, again, I am in the minority here.
Well, I, I like the project, um, I, I've seen, I've worked with Mr. Anderson when he's barbecued, uh, at the Rianda House for charity. Uh, I didn't see any great amount of smoke that bothered anybody, and I coughed like heck in the smoke, and, um, I'm a barbecue nut, so I really encourage you a lot, John, to, and I will support this, uh, one hundred percent. If we have, if we have any complaints, we would invite you back to visit with us.
And we're happy to do it.
May I have a, um, motion, please?
Um, I move that, do I do the staff recommendation, is that what I read?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it's new. Uh, that staff feels that addition of a catering business to the existing chocolate shop will have minimal impact to surrounding businesses, and it won't be in every, I'm reading that. Okay.
It's also, if I might interrupt, too, it's always appropriate for the motion to simply refer to the staff recommendation, if that's what you wanted to.
I would love to, I move to the staff recommendation.
Roll call, please.
Thank you, Tom Brown.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Good luck, John.
Thank you, folks, thank you.
I'm looking forward to it.
No. I thought that was a conference.
So staff is happy to give the department report briefly, conclude the meeting. Uh, just wanted to thank everyone who attended the goal-setting, uh, over the weekend, Saturday, uh, was well-attended, and staff expects, um, some direction to come out of that from the council that will, uh, affect staff's workload and, and kind of our focus of the department, so obviously I will be revisiting that with the commission in a direction that comes, uh, from the council goal-setting. Um, we are, uh, I'm happy to announce that we have filled the counter-technician position that we've been down since mid-October, um, so that's over twenty-four, or about twenty-five percent of the department, so that was a significant impact. Uh, we were able to meet our goals, and Xenia Gamaro is an amazing help, I just want to give her great credit for stepping up and backfilling that position, um, while we did a recruitment, and we hired Sophia Johnson, and she will be starting on the twenty-first of February, so just let everyone know. Um, please bear with us while we work through some of the kinks of getting a new person on board, but, um, also, the application period for the new planning commission member, I believe, has ended, and, uh, we are hoping to have an appointment by the city council on Valentine's Day, so the fourteenth, we're hoping, so we'll have a full commission, um, since Commissioner Korberstein elevated herself to the, uh, city council. And, um, you'll notice that there is a slight change, uh, to, from the agenda forecast format, it's been updated slightly, so just please be aware of that, and feel free to share it with anyone who's trying to, uh, find out kind of what the department is working on, and some of the things that, um, the commission has directed and council-directed, et cetera. And along those lines, um, there's a couple of future items that are actually not on the agenda forecast, and, uh, I'm sorry, Planner Bianco, uh, mentioned the changes to the state law with regards to accessory dwelling units, obviously recreational marijuana, um, so those are the things that staff anticipates zoning ordinance changes will come before the planning commission, then on to the city council for adoption, to get the zoning code in line with state law. While we obviously have lots of work to focus on, uh, staff does not like to have existing adopted policy be out of sync with state law, and so we will shift some resources to try to get those updates, uh, moving, um, parallel to some of the other things we're working on. So that concludes my presentation, just wanted to let the commission know.
Is there any, um, any, I didn't see a place, is the Hunter project ever coming back?
So, uh, the Hunter project is, staff has met with the Hunter team, let them know the, what remains in the EIR that needs to be updated and adopted, and we're waiting on their response. There are some additional costs associated with finalizing the EIR, and I believe they're reviewing those costs, and, uh, we're waiting on Hunter's team to get back to us, to direct us to make those final revisions, and then get the EIR out.
No, I know you guys are really busy, but someplace down the line, I wonder if we could have a, um, study session on, um, when somebody applies for something, what goes through and why it takes so long to finish it? I'm getting people calling saying that it's taken eight or nine months to get a project through, and I, I'd like to see what the process is, because I don't know it.
Sure, I, I-
If someday you could do that, I'd appreciate that.
Happy to agendas that item, and if you would please have anyone who says their process took eight or nine months, please contact me directly, because I'm not aware of anyone who's experiencing that.
Anything else? Meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much.